Spencer Plymouth Realty LLC, 10 Collins Ave., MAP 101, lots 42-1, 42-9, 38, and 32H. Construct a 137,500 square foot industrial manufacturing building at the site. Stormwater and erosion controls will be implemented. Grading and leveling of the site will entail earth removal of 488,000 cubic yards from the site. Please note that the planning board previously determined this to be a unified complex and that the applicant will seek approval of a solar installation at the site via separate application.
Did we just skip Paul?
Is there any...
I apologize.
Are you going to walk around and flap your gums or are you going to come to the podium like I asked initially and introduce yourself and begin?
I will come to the podium and introduce myself. I just walked into the room. I didn't hear the precursor.
In any event.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sims and I am representing the petitioner in this case, which is Mr. Scott Spencer on behalf of Spencer Realty and Northeast Traffic Control. I'm not going to bore this committee with the historical chronology of this particular case because you're well familiar with it. I am not as familiar with it. I just got brought into this case recently. So I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, but I'm going to do my best to try to address questions that are presented to us and at the same time make a cogent presentation to what this board is looking for tonight. So with me tonight is... Is Rich here? Rich Tabrizinski? There you go. Yes, our project engineer. Shay Spencer, who is doing part of the presentation, along with Mike Sutton, who will present as well, and Mr. Scott Spencer, the owner of the property, and Northeast Traffic Control. In any event, do we have a full board tonight? I'm sorry, don't, right?
Yeah, it's on Zoom.
No.
Oh.
Actually, we have Frank Mann on and Paul McCullough is not here. So we have four members.
So Mr. Mann is on Zoom and is going to be a voting member? Okay. So before we begin, I would just like to address one concern that I have, and it's been brought to my attention just recently that one of these... Okay. Apparently, it's been well-known to my client in this particular board that the Pine Barrens Alliance has made a number of demands upon the Director of Inspection Services here in town, as well as this particular board, as to certain elements of this particular project. And I've been advised that Mr. Mann is also a member of the Pine Barrens Alliance. Based upon that information and the vocal and written opposition to this project, I believe it is inappropriate, and I've got concerns of Mr. Mann's ability to be impartial in acting on behalf of this board on this decision. So I would respectfully ask Mr. Mann individually to please recuse himself from participating in this particular case. And if not, then I would ask the chairman to take some action and address the concerns of my client with respect to this. There is at the very least an appearance of impropriety with respect to conflict of interest with the Pine Barrens Alliance in this particular case. And if it were to advance beyond this particular hearing with Mr. Mann participating, there could be some fallout that I don't think this board, the town, or anybody wants to see. So if Mr. Mann would respectfully recuse himself from this matter, I believe we can advance and make a presentation. This board can vote without any potential conflict of interest issues. That being said, we are prepared to move forward once the board and Mr. Mann decide what they're going to do in terms of our request, and we'll make our presentation.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the legal basis is for asserting a conflict of interest?
Sure. The state ethics law is very, very clear in terms of people who are sitting on a publicly-elected or appointed board and participating in a group that has clear opposition or support of it. Either way, you can't have an appearance of impropriety, one way or another, on any issue presented to the board if you are involved with an opponent or proponent of that. And if you want me to cite?
Yes, I'd like you to cite the regulation, please.
So who's making that statement?
Oh, that was you. Okay, I couldn't even figure that out. Okay. A municipal employee may not act in a manner that would cause a reasonable person to think that she would show favor towards someone or that she can be improperly influenced. Section 23B3. Also requires a municipal employee to consider whether her relationships and affiliations could prevent her or him from acting fairly and objectively when he or she performs her duties for a city or a town. And if he or she cannot be fair and objective because of a reasonable relationship or affiliation, he or she should not perform his or her duties. So Mr. Mann is the Director of the Pine Barrens Alliance. They've written to our Direction of Inspection Services. They voiced opposition to this project to my client directly, and I think I've said enough. You have it in front of you that he's involved with the Pine Barrens Alliance. Pine Barrens Alliance is opposed to this project on many fronts, and he's a sitting member of this board. So I think it's appropriate that Mr. Mann recuse himself from the discussion and voting on this project.
Thank you. We are well aware of this. I sent a note to Mr. Mann this morning to ask him that question. I don't appreciate all the legal jumbo-jumbo I just heard threatening us in this matter. Mr. Mann, would you please give us your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, before that, I don't appreciate the comment of a threat. This is not a threat. This is a statement to protect not just this board, but the town, my client, and everybody so that they have... Everybody has a fair and impartial hearing on this without the potential for some fallout down the line. So there's no threat here. I'm just bringing this to the attention of the board. I'm glad that you are already aware of it, and will appreciate Mr. Mann's comments as well.
Can I proceed?
Yes.
So first of all, the South East River and South East Pine Barrens Alliance is in no way involved in this issue. I was informed that it has been said that there's a legal suit brought by our group, which is the group SEMPA, and that's not the case. In fact, this whole matter began when I, as a member of the planning board, did my due diligence and visited the site in question to understand what would be the ramifications of any decisions or conditions or anything that would happen. It's a normal course of events for any planning board member to want to know what he or she may be voting on. So in early October, I visited the site and discovered that there had been major excavation, sand removal had taken place, and everything that I could see in my site had been removed. And I brought this to the intention, to the attention of the planning staff because I felt it was inappropriate, especially because we had yet to do a site plan review. We had plans before us, and several times the site plan review had been delayed, and what was happening seemed to me to be out of the norm, irregular, and unacceptable from my perspective. And I brought that to the attention, and then as it turns out, the removal of sand and ground from the site had been specifically prohibited in a stump and tree removal permit that had been given to them. I have an actual statement I'd like to make on the whole project if I would be allowed. But again, to talk about conflict of interest, in no way is SEMPA, the group, I guess that's referred to as the Pine Barrens Alliance in this case, involved in this. And in no way was that in any way why I visited the site, any of the sites I visit as a member of the planning board representing the community, not in any specific interest of my own. Now, of course, like anyone on any board, I have a background, I have experience, I have my interests, and I am a member of a nonprofit, which has to do with the Pine Barrens Alliance. But they were not involved in this in any way, and I don't know how they would be involved in this specifically. It's not something... The Pine Barrens Alliance basically works to preserve open space as much as they can. But it's also understood that the bylaws of the community seek to preserve that same open space. And in fact, our natural features conservation bylaw seeks to preserving as much of the natural topography and woods and wildlands as we possibly can, even in an industrial park. So I'm representing the community on the planning board, not a specific group. I could be a construction manager for a major construction company and be elected to the planning board, and I doubt anyone would say, "Oh, you can't vote on these things because you're biased in favor of construction." So there are no grounds to say this. As a matter of fact, I understand that Northeast Traffic Control, or someone representing them, several weeks ago, before this matter came before, before the plans we have now before us were revealed, went to the town clerk's office and asked about a recall petition for me. And I was kind of amused hearing this, trying to understand why that would be the case because I simply brought to the intention of our staff what was going on there after they received that permit. Nothing out of the ordinary, and even a citizen could bring to light or bring to the attention of staff in the community something they thought may not be completely straightforward or acceptable within the regulations. So again, I have no intention of recusing myself. I don't think there's any way, a case to be made for that, that I'm biased in this case. Yes, you should consider these things in all things you do as a member of the board. And I definitely do consider those things, but I'm representing the board and the community in this and not in any particular regard. Thank you.
Do you want to get on with the meeting or...
Yeah, we're going to go on with the meeting, of course.
All right, well, let's go.
I'm just going to bring to the board's attention one last item. As of yesterday, there was a letter received from an attorney, Jonathan Palloni, who represents STPB, which is the Save the Pine Barrens Committee, and in which he alleges they are an aggrieved party, and he's looking for a cease and desist order. So to disassociate yourself or divorce yourself from that particular committee and sit on this board, I think, is a little bit disingenuous at the least, but it is up to the board.
That is not the Pine Barrens Alliance. That is not the Pine Barrens Alliance. So you have a little confusion there. You said we came to this in the game.
I did.
And I think you... So I would just tell you that that is not the Pine Barrens Alliance, the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance. It's a separate entity.
So Save the Pine Barrens is not part of the Save the Pine Barrens Alliance. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Well, there's a letter by an aggrieved party alleging to be Save the Pine Barrens, and if they disassociate themselves with the other entity, so be it. I've made my statement for the record, and we're going to proceed with our presentation at this point. And we will start with...
So Chairman McGregor, if I could just make just one point. So we have four members here in present and Frank on Zoom. The fourth members are alternate, so he is not permitted to vote on this. He can only vote on special permits. For some reason, that's what state law does. So we have three... Four members who are here to vote on this. We don't have the five. So just so everyone's aware, the quantum of vote is three.
We'll go with that. Okay, so I think we're going to start our presentation now. And first off? Okay.
All right, hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us talk about our project. Appreciate everyone taking time out of their busy schedule. So my name is Shay Spencer. I'm here today with my father, Scott, and Mike. I'm going to get in a little bit about the history of our company, talk about our future plans for this project. I'd like to begin by providing a bit of a context to who we are as a company and then elaborate on our roots in Plymouth. I'll then touch on where our company is going in the future and how we intend to adapt to the changing landscape that we're in. As I'm sure everyone knows, the whole infrastructure bill that just passed will have a large impact on how we work going forward. So is there a way to go to the next? So...
Should we hear it?
Right here?
Nope.
Oh, right here. Okay. All right, so who we are as a company. So we started here in Plymouth. My father started working here, you know, as a company of one directing traffic throughout Plymouth. He then expanded over the 27 years. We've grown from a single-person company to over 50 people. Now, he started years before I was even born, and now it's kind of coming on to the next generation. We now have 50 employees. We service all of New England. We have jobs up to the tip of Maine, down to Connecticut. We do all of this. We have, you know, hundreds of trailers. We do all of this out of a 10,000-square-foot building, out of three acres of usable land. It's pretty easy to say that at this point, we are overflowing. We have extended our capacity. We can no longer function out of our current situation. Here's just a short list of the services we offer. The state's town infrastructure, these are kind of the services that we do, and we've really expanded from, you know, day one of just directing traffic to all of these other forms of supporting our state's infrastructure. Now, what we really want to focus on is not where we've been, but where we're going in the future. A big part of that is they've come out with this $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill. Now, in order for us to ramp up for this infrastructure bill, we need to reinvest in Plymouth in the industrial park, and we need to give ourselves room to grow. We need to give ourselves room to really expand, really, you know, provide the state's infrastructure what they need. And then this growth will in turn create jobs within Plymouth, will create property tax, will create excise tax that will benefit the town. Now, this is just kind of a breakdown of how this infrastructure bill is allocated. Now, $25 billion worth of this is going towards roads and bridges within New England. Now, what we want to do with this 135,000-square-foot building, you can see we're going from 10,000 square feet into a much, much larger building that's already permitted. We are looking to add an entire extruded panel manufacturing facility, which will create jobs for the people within Plymouth. The reason for this and why it would be in demand is, you can see, these are the two other major sign manufacturing facilities. There's, you know, you really need to... We need to have something that can service the New England region. Right now, if we need to get anything, it's a 14-hour to 24-hour drive to the closest facility. The Interstate Signways is actually the one that was looking to put their facility with us. And this is kind of what it would look like inside that facility. And as you can see, this is a very large area which would create many jobs within the town. Now, Mike and my father are going to go into, how can we make it so that we not only grow in order to keep up with our expansion and to capitalize on this new infrastructure bill, but how can we grow in a way that is also a win for the town of Plymouth and also really maintains the integrity of the town? Right where we are is the first thing that people are going to see when they drive into the town of Plymouth. We want to make sure that what they see isn't all of our cones, all of our drums, all of these really bright reflective materials. So how do we make it so that not only do we give ourselves the room to grow within the town, invest in the town that has been here now for two generations, and hopefully will go on for generations to come, but how do we make it so that it is also in the best interest of the town and preserves the integrity of the town where as soon as you get off that next exit, you're going to historic Plymouth, you're going into, you know, the areas that much of us are really proud of, and that's why we live here, things that we really cherish? So Mike and my father will get into how we get into this project and how do we do it in a way that preserves that integrity and makes it a place that you're proud of. So I'll hand it off to Mike.
Thanks, Shay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Sutton. I'm the Engineering Manager for Northeast Traffic Control. I wish I could tell you that I was advocating to keep it here in Plymouth because I live in Upton, and I drive to Plymouth every day. But he's hell-bent on staying in town, so I lost that battle a long time ago. Under the previous approved plan, there are some things that really troubled us when we started looking at what was there, you know, that requires raising that area of about four acres between almost 18 and 48 feet in some areas. And that's in two-foot lifts with a lot of heavy vibratory compaction equipment. If you've ever worked next to one of those or anywhere near those, it'll vibrate your desk as you're sitting at it. You know, with retaining walls all around it and right up to the lot lines, no buffers, no green space, no new plantings along the site perimeter because those walls are really pushed all the way out to our neighbors. So no buffers at all. There were some limited plantings for internal vegetation on, say, parking lot islands. There were some trees and some immediate vegetation along the building, but not a lot. Building and construction equipment would be fully visible to the commuters and tourists just before they exit downtown Plymouth, as Shay was pointing out. You know, you can see the site now as you drive by it from the highway. And seeing a building there with all of our construction equipment, which I'll show you an example of shortly here, really not all that appealing to the eye, to be honest. And that's one of the things we're trying to shield. And we were asked to shield, actually, when Scott developed the property that we're on now, and I'll explain that a little bit further in the presentation. Additionally, the current plan would, you know, cost a little bit more money. Not that 1.2 is a little, that's actually a lot, but, you know, it's a lot of excavation, compaction, testing with each lift, plus the extended time to actually do all that work. What we're looking to do is to minimize the walls along the site, get them away from the lot lines where we do have to keep them because of the grades and because of water treatment areas, water retention areas. That would open up lots of areas for us for plantings of trees, shrubbery, green space on the exterior, not only shielding the building and the site and everything within it from the highway and the motorists coming into town on Route 3, but also from our neighbors, you know? Instead of them looking at retaining walls that are right up against their property line in their existing facilities, they'd have a green space and a buffer between us and them as well. It also allows the opportunity for us to add some solar carports. You know, we are an environmentally conscious company. We try where we can, and it's one of the things that we're trying to do to advance our lead building certification as we move forward. Because of the type of work that we're talking about doing, it reduces the amount of fill that would need to be put in certain areas, so it really reduces the amount of heavy compaction that would be needed and increases a lot of flexibility for butter coordination. You know, we've been working with some of our new neighbors, and with that additional buffer, it gives us opportunities to create areas for snow storage for them that they don't have now. And it's been a problem for some of the neighbors, and they've asked. We've been very accommodating, moving things around, just giving them areas that they can access for upkeep of their own property and access along their property lines. This here is just to give a representation of the current site. You can see that elevation 100 is the bottom of that drainage ditch that is there. The yellow represents the edge of the current cut that is there. The rest of the site, aside from having the trees removed and being stumped, has been untouched for the most part. If the dirt was moved, it was simply moved around within the site. The only area that's been disturbed has been from the parking lot to that yellow line. This is just a quick illustration of the cuts and fills to give you the order of magnitude for this site. The grade changes in this site are dramatic. They go from, I want to say, almost 180 down to about 100 at its height, and the 180 is probably right about here. That's the top of the mountain. And, you know, so there's a lot of topography challenges here within this site. Just to give you another illustration here, this is what the site looks like today. The site, the line, the bottom line you see, there's actually, and I know you can't see it at this scale, but there's a little tiny grade stake that that arrow is pointing to. That's elevation 130, which is the same elevation that we were standing at when that picture was taken. So our feet are at 130, and then that parking lot pitches down. That upper elevation is the 147.6 that would be the finished floor elevation of the building, thus requiring all that fill and all of those retaining walls along that site. And again, the bottom is just an aerial view so that you can see... This picture here is taken from this parking lot, looking out toward that hill. Just to give you an idea, with Triple M being over... I think it died on me. Triple M being over on the right. Again, just another illustration of where the current cut is now within the site and where it falls within the building footprint and the finished floor elevation of 147 on the as-permitted plan. So what's permitted now, I don't need to tell you. You all know. You've been really involved with this process for quite a while. You can see this site here. Most of the perimeter on Route 3 and along the abutters to the bottom of this plan, the south side, south and west, you can see those are mostly retaining walls, and they are literally right up against the property lines, with parking fields right against those. Those green spaces are permitted and shown right now in the current set as just mainly grass. No plantings, no trees, except for within the islands, as I spoke of earlier, within the parking fields and along the perimeter of the building itself. So this is a rendering to show you that if you're at the highway, that grade's about 152. With a finished floor elevation of 147.6, this is what it would look like with the equipment to the north of the building, with the main complex being to the south of that open field. We currently have several yards, because the one we're in, as Shay pointed out, we're busting at the seams. Being the largest rental equipment fleet here in New England, we've got about 1,500 pieces of equipment. And at any given time, especially this time of year, most of that comes home to roost, and that's what it would be looking like times 10. And that's not what we want people to see as they come into Plymouth. We want it to be welcoming. We want to hide our shame, so to speak, from the general public because it's an eyesore. I mean, you get the slightest bit of a headlight catching that reflective material, and it comes right back at you. Anybody who's seen a drum off on the side of the road can speak to that. So what we're proposing with the addition of that extra parcel on the left, it gave us the ability to sort of elongate things a little bit and create these green spaces, these buffered areas all the way around the complex to shield it not only from the public out on Route 3 and the tourists that are headed to Cape Cod and downtown Plymouth, but also from our neighbors, just to give some separation. This is sort of a rendering of what it would look like. Now, this is showing the building at elevation 130 with a carport solar over our equipment field. So not only would it shield it horizontally from sight with the grade difference, you also get a cover on top to keep... To limit visibility additionally to it. Just another picture of what it would look like. You can see all the trees. The whole idea of this is basically to shield it with trees and vegetation from the highway and our neighbors. Just another look at it there from an elevated view over the highway. This is just so you could see what it would look like with the carport. Instead of trucks, for the most part, you would see traffic control equipment, message boards, what have you, drums, and all our other pieces of equipment and some construction materials because we do store overhead sign structures and signs on our site as well. We have presented to the board, I believe you guys have all the letters, not only from people in town, some... people in town, some area abutters, but also every one of the adjacent abutters has sent letters of support for this project. You know, everybody thinks it's a good idea. They don't want to be looking at our building as much as we don't want to be looking at theirs, but it makes for a much better feel within that complex, within the industrial complex so that doesn't feel like, you know, when you come down 495 and you're looking at all those buildings from the highway or an Amazon facility that's unshielded from the highway, you just look at a big building. We're trying to change that. We really care about what it looks like, the look and feel as you're coming into town and within the complex itself. This here is a view of our current laydown yard. Our building would be just off-screen above, below this where the camera shot was taken. This is just a taste of some of our equipment. That's probably an eighth of what we own. We've got several yards throughout the area that are full of our equipment at this time of year because they all come home due to, you know, winter construction season. There is a video here. I don't know how to play it, though. See if that does anything. There it is. Just to kind of give you an idea, right now, that's three acres cleared? And in this particular case, you can see that that is also sunken. It was reduced from the building grade by quite a bit, and I want to say it's probably about 15 feet. And that was done because of the housing complexes up on the hill there didn't want to be looking at our equipment off in the distance. It's one thing to see all the buildings, but nobody wanted to see all that orange. So a request was made by the town when Scott was building this facility to hog that out and recess our equipment area. And we're following the same ideas what he was asked to do previously. And then the major sort of visual for this is just so that you can see, there's a carport solar field right there at the Comcast Center, the Comcast Building, rather, and that's what we're looking to do over that equipment field so that you wouldn't see it from above. It shields it from, you know, horizontally if it's down below grade. With that, I guess we'll open it up to questions. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Your presentation is complete?
It is. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me have the board ask any initial questions before I bring it to the audience.
Excellent. Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of a statement that I had prepared and I hoped to read before the presentation by the commissioner, and there are some questions to bear with me. Being on Zoom, sometimes these things have their own issues. First of all, it was my hope that we did not begin this site plan review for the material before it was mentioned realty at all until and unless the proponents satisfied to really explain what they thought, why they thought it was permissible to alter the lots in question before the present planning board had the opportunity to discuss their plans in common. The proposal before us, my opinion, is little of the example that the proposal made earlier this year and for which a tree stump removal was given for site preparation. That permit, which I would have sought to condition if I was given the opportunity, noted specifically that no gravel was to be removed. Yet when I almost accidentally discovered that permit being implemented likely weakened that operation, trucks carrying sand and gravel were entering and leaving the site, a direct violation of that permit, which is a very simple permit, says no gravel permitted, no gravel removal permitted. Though I believe they were ordered to cease the removal, tractors and vacos were active on the site weeks afterward, moving sand and gravel without, at the very least. I would suggest this was not permitted under the permit for a tree stump removal. The original rationale for that gravel rule related to me through the planning staff, including building inspector Nick Mayo, was that they were acting on a previous plan that had been reviewed by a previous iteration of this board. But when I examined that permit, I saw that it references a parcel not included in the original proposal. I believe undermining the argument that this permit was allowed in the old site plan review. The original proposal that it was suggested the proponents were acting on, I also discovered, was put forward by the industrial trust. The second proposal included plans and semantics with the name of the industrial trust on it as well, but they were not the industrial trust associated with this plan at all, I discovered. That misrepresentation, as I see it, and the violation of the tree and stump removal permit suggests to me again that our first order business should be to consider whether fines and a consultation with town councils should be our next step, not the review of this new proposal. The tree and stump removal permit itself lists the property owner as the industrial trust, and I believe that renders that permit null and void. The second proposal, the first in 2021, was purportedly a plan to construct a laydown, an outdoor storage area for construction equipment, in this case, traffic control equipment, and called for the removal of 125,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel. That was the plan before us when the tree and stump removal permit was awarded and gravel legally removed. We can argue about the amount of gravel removed between the day the permit was awarded and my discovery of the activity, but now that the work has taken place, the property owner returns to us with a new plan and fed after an additional 500,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel, suggesting, I guess, that this is incidental to the project. The initial illegal excavation that took place was not permitted, and yet I think we can show exceeded many of the built-in controls that a permitted gravel removal operation would be required to adhere to, notably the maintenance of natural buffers, 50 feet to the lot line or deeper natural buffers from the edge of the excavation, and prohibition against excavations going lower than 10 feet above the water table during the excavation with an allowed removal permit. But there are orders, the order tree and stump removal took place right up against the lot lines, and I believe within a short distance of the deep excavation area, and at least two areas went right down into the water table before now it's been covered up. Whatever the motivations of those who sparkle in my opinion, the facts suggest, there should be a major restoration of the site, fines levy perhaps, and more before again we consider a new plan, let alone one that asks us to consider allowing a half million cubic yards of sand and gravel to be used. I would also like to point out that there are foundational elements for our planning and zoning renovations that need to be addressed by every developer, regardless of size, zoning, complexity, or cost. Elements that if we'd been given the opportunity to review the last site plan given to us in a public session before the tree and stump removal permit was awarded might have been addressed. Let me list three of those foundational elements. The first is our natural features bylaw, which asks that wherever possible and reasonable, then the natural conditions of the land, including its topography, must be maintained. There's a large section of that bylaw, but I'll read three short passages. First, under intent, that bylaw says it's meant to prevent human damage to landscape and topography or degradation of the non-lucent natural resources of town. It also goes on to say that naturally existing tree coverage and other desirable existing native vegetation shall be preserved on every lot to the maximum extent possible and as shown on a few developments, where we didn't have the opportunity in this case. It also goes on to say that continuity of natural topography shall be maintained during construction, and structures and other site appearance features shall be designed and decided to fit naturally into the natural topography. The foundational element two that I would like to bring to your attention is our master plan, and I'll simply read its six core elements. To control salt, strong, protect the environment, preserve character, encourage economic development, balance foster growth, and improve quality of life. I would suggest that the plan only addresses one, the encouraging economic development. A major and important one, yes, but not all the entire thing. Finally, a foundational element number three is the select board and the recently two declarations they made. First, they declared a climate emergency to ensure the town factors climate and environmental impacts with all policies, procedures, planning, and decision making. I think it's self-evident that the removal of thousands of trees and natural ground cover over the vast majority of the lots in question does not reflect concern for climate impacts, no matter what the new plan suggests we'll do after the fact. There are also the select board adopted climate action, zero decarbonization plan. The removal of nearly every tree and shrub movement, dozens of acres of heavily wooded hilly terrain creates, I think, the opposite effect of what that declaration has.
Thank you. I meant just to have a couple of quick questions from the board before I had staff comment. Tim, do you have any quick questions?
I'd like to hear from staff and any residents that are here before I make any comments. Thank you.
Brigetta?
I agree with Mr. Grandy. I'd like to wait to hear from the audience and from the staff.
I'll wait as well.
Okay. Robin or Lee?
Basically, tonight, the memo to the building commissioner from the planning board should be, where you, the planning board, determine whether or not the gravel removal that they're proposing here is incidental to the project. And I think just through their presentation of what their reasoning behind dropping the site, I think there's some relative good points about that. It is the visual entrance into the town from the highway that they're trying to address. So I think that that is very important for the town and as a community visually to look at the impact of that. They have support from all of the surrounding abutters, and this is industrial zoned. I mean, we have an economic issue and concern in town, and I know Frank mentioned that was the only one he felt was addressed in this, but even in the natural conservation section of the bylaw, it talks about outside of active construction areas to try to retain as many of the trees as you can. And I think we have very limited industrial and commercial land in town, and I think that it's important for us to be able to utilize it where we can, and it's sandwiched right between the highway and all other industrial uses. So I believe that this makes sense in an area like this.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this? If you wish to, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Dick Quintal, Precinct 1. I came here as a business owner, but one of the members brought up the Board of Selectment. So if I may have a few minutes to explain how I feel, how I interpret it, and how Mr. May interprets it. But the reason I came here tonight was to support this business coming to town because not only is it supporting this business, who's been my neighbor, by the way, and I never knew Mr. Spencer until I moved to Scobee Circle. And anyway, I may be seeing him six, seven times, talk all the time. He watches my property, I watch his. Now we all have cameras. He's been a good neighbor. I've watched a man build a business from maybe six to eight trucks to probably 70, 80, tractor trailer noses, you name it, probably 90, 100 vehicles for income for the town of Plymouth. Two weeks ago, we had a tax classification hearing on our board. People want to have a split tax rate. We can't have a split tax rate. Why can't we have a split tax rate? We don't have enough business in this community. Okay? And we have to address it, and I want to work with this board to do that, and that's one of my goals for this year, one of the boards. So I don't know how we get there if we don't welcome business. Yeah, they have to follow the rules. When I built my building on Scobee Circle, I had a problem. People, and I'm not going to name the name of the surveying company, they're well-known in town, marked the trees wrong with the wrong color tape, I guess. One of the neighbors come over and says, hey, there's supposed to be a so-and-so flip bumper here, so we took out the tape. Me and another guy said, wow, we got a problem, Houston. We're shot like 50 feet. They took it down the wrong thing. We worked it out, we put up something, and the park gave them some land. Things happen. But, you know, people come into this town, no matter what business it is, we need business. All right? We need business. We need to change the way we do business in this community. And you know who gets the blame for it? We do. When I say we, the select board. And that has to change. We have to figure out an area of town where businesses can go and we can have some relief in this town. Because I'll tell you what, the people are crazy in this town with their tax rates, and I don't blame them. That being said, and the CANS agreement and this other thing we're going to put together, I have reservation after hearing some of the remarks I heard tonight, and I was a little reluctant with that, so I wouldn't be putting restrictions on businesses and people in this community that were uncalled for. I want to partner with Yous, as you know, to go into the Holtec property, which is a large process, but I'm not going to go in with this kind of attitude. I know some has to go in conservation. I totally get it, and I want to work with you, but I'm not going to go in with a, you know, with an alliance or a partnership that's one way. It can't be. That's not the way it's supposed to be, and I'll never support it. I'll tell you right now. And I know there's going to be another member here tonight that's at the Conservation Committee, and that's what's hard about, you know, meeting on the same nights. Normally, I wouldn't be able to come here. I missed the meeting that they had the last time because I was down the hall in another meeting. We were Zooming. So, you know, we lost 7 million-plus tax dollars to the community this year just from Holtec. That has to be made up, at least partially the way. There has to be a plan in place to move forward for everybody, conservation, whatever. But, you know, I see businesses trying to come here and getting every hurdle thrown at them as possible. They bring lawyers, they bring architects, they bring this, they got the whole lineup. I don't know how many are in this room and what it's costing an hour, and they keep coming back and keep doing it. There's got to be a better way, people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Somebody on the.
My name is Jay Kimble.
Okay.
I'm on Zoom.
Yep. Yep.
My name is Jay Kimble. I'm speaking as a resident. I just saw a couple of boards in town, and I'm speaking on behalf of those boards. I want to briefly, briefly explain and just go a little bit further than what Mr. Kimble just talked about. Two weeks ago, we were the tax classification hearing, and we wanted to keep a single tax rate, and the percentage of residential tax revenue in this town is 85%, commercials is 15%. So you start with, you have, here the commercial land that is available, and other than this being the industrial park, there's no land available at that industrial park on Sector 7 and 73rd Street. So you have an applicant, and if you hear who has a word on this side about it, whether it is private, it's approved, then I'll leave that to you. However, I will say that 17 acres of approximately size of this land that Mr. Spencer has is generating revenue to the town only of a vacant land assessment. If Mr. Spencer approves the property, puts 137,000 square feet of building on a property on 17 acres, the assessment is going to go from basically zero to millions and millions of dollars. The piece of land probably generates zero jobs, and again, revenue to the tax revenue. As a community, we have to really look hard about increasing the commercial tax revenue to the town. If you have a piece of land like this, it's commercially owned, industrial owned, located in the industrial park, that's where the industrial businesses do grow. And again, I'm looking at the economic benefits of the town by trying to increase the commercial tax base, hopefully someday take a little pressure off of the residential tax rate. Again, the Board will decide whether this project will serve, and we really think we have to be concerned with increasing the commercial tax base over a period of time and how you look at projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin arriving on Zoom. Can I make a statement?
Certainly.
Thank you. As a director of order, it's horribly impacted by this because the land in question is all because of the north of the turtle land facility and the south of the turtle land facility. south of the turtle land facility. I just wanted to weigh in. I did have my letter indicating support and our company for this project. I think the applicant has done an excellent job in reaching out to the neighbors and sharing plans and absolutely modifying the plans and what is being afforded. And I think that this would be a great benefit not only to the industrial park, but to the town of Plymouth. And I would very support for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Naishya.
Okay. Yes, Naishya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Naishya. I'm a attorney on the estate of Plymouth. My family has four generations in family business in the area. I'm a stock-in family companies. We are back in the area of my business and playing by the rules for a hundred and twenty-five years. My comments about this project are not about not developing the land. I know it's about, I know it's industrial long land in an industrial park. Of course, it's only reasonable to develop it. My comments are about playing by the rules. Spencer has violated the rules and has obtained the zoning permit by fraud. And I know a lot of people here probably don't understand or know the backstory of what is going on here. So I'm going to tell you. As I said, I'm owner of the, of my, she and family companies. I'm a jury she and daughter. He was one of the owners of the industrial trust until recently. All of these lots, I'm calling out, including ones that it's subject of this project. I'm here in my capacity as an owner of the company and someone with ownership interest in the industrial park trust that I have more dealings with the planning board of this project. As Mr. Man mentioned, the zoning permit that was issued, that permit was obtained by fraud. And it involved our company's name and our company's reputation. And it continues to harm our business reputation, the way this project has violated rules. The planning board should not be going forward until you address the violations. The fraud interfering, the building, the zoning permit by submitting a zoning permit application with our company's name on it, doesn't, Mr. Spencer did, he did not own the property, then obtained the zoning permit, it should never have been issued because the plans were outdated and expired. And the zoning inspector that built the department had absolutely no authority to issue that permit. Again, my father is a business partner, urban foreign home, does this property in a realty trust, industrial trust. They owned it for many decades. Over the years, many developers approached them with proposals to sell or lease the property. They held on to it. They didn't do anything. Plans were drawn up, inserted into the town over the years, but not being fruition. One of the groups they were talking to was the Northeast Traffic Control to build a facility there. Different plans were drawn up. All of the plans that we were involved with, and more of these traffic controls was involved with, were consistent in the town's bylaw for natural conservation and all were consistent with the standards of the planning board site review. None of those plans required the removal of sand and gravel in order to develop the property. This land is a roof for moving about six million dollars of sand and gravel. Our plans show that it is not necessary or incidental to remove this much sand and gravel in order to develop this site. The industrial trust, again, my father, who's now nine years old, still sharing the company, began negotiating to sell the property to Mr. Spencer in 2021. The property sold to him in August of 2021, when it applied for a zoning permit to clear the site with our name on it at a time when he did not own the land. The building inspector issued the zoning permit for site clearing based on old plans that had been inspired, stating that new plans were expected. Mr. Spencer proceeded to immediately strip the site and start shooting it off-site. I believe my Zoom was going and out, but I believe I heard say that no earth was removed from the site. That's an absolute lie. This damaged our family's reputation because our names were on those permits. And the building inspector had no right to issue the zoning permit because the project required site clearing review. Some of the laws that included on the zoning permit application that had our name on it were not even owned by us. They were owned by the business next door. Yes, the earth removal has stopped under verbal order by the building inspector. This is completely insufficient. There's nothing written that I know of. No penalties, no consequences. If Mr. Spencer truly cared about the trees and then logged the view of his neighbors and the tourists on Route Three, why didn't he take down the trees in the first place? So now I'm going to put it on my hat as coordinator of Save the Pine Barrens, a nonprofit organization. I want to make it clear that the City of the Pine Barrens is entirely separate from the southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Lions. Mr. Man is not a member of Save the Pine Barrens. Save the Pine Barrens is a nonprofit group whose mission is to protect and preserve and steward land and water here in southeastern Mass. Land is being stripped mine and sand mined under the roofs of various development projects like this. Yes, we sent a letter to the building inspector asking him to enforce the zoning bylaw by restoring the site or demanding some certification, either onsite and offsite, for this project to move forward. This is also a full investigation by the Select Board of the Building Department, how this project was permitted in the first place through the insurance of zoning permit. I don't want to say it, but it certainly goes to us from the outside, that there is a simple series involving town officials to make sure that the sand and ground is stripped mine out of this town more and more every day. The site does not need sand and ground removed in order to be developed. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else who care to comment? If not, I will bring it back to the board for questions, comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Two of us.
Yeah. Yes.
Just writing in the policy, whatever reason, when I'm at, I share on the comments of what happened in D.C. I probably saw, like, I'm not a citizen, I'm just here with the people that we have them. But I'm a member for the Italians. And, you know, our key, one of the key charges for us is economic development. And we lose that every single year. Real terrible projects, residential big marathons of the projects every year. And all that does is create more impact on police, fire, schools. So, you know, we're running out of projects like this. And I think this, you know, projects and some people's, you know, hasn't got off on the way this kind of came about. But we don't have a lot of money. And I like to speak to, you know, the fact, just a lot of people are seeing the type of space that Spencer's trying to create. And let me tell you, this is a huge demand for this contract base and that type of development. And we are just running out of that. And I'm talking about, it's just like a battery. And everybody talks, everyone talks, I'm beginning to run out of development, we're running out of development. Every time a project like this comes along, everything comes out of the work. And these developers, they are frustrated. One of them has some bad comments on it for being anti-business friendly. And we lost great projects. You talk about, you know, the land of the high angle and another area of the high, we lost those great projects. This is a great project. And if people talk about, you know, the little, that's the five, the law, the city, I like this project. I like the look. I think if that's what it's going to take to reduce that town, to make that streamlined, make that look more presentable, I like it. I just, you know, I'm sure that the board has to decide. But it is proper. But I'm just telling you the struggles that we face, that I face, and the struggles that me and my board members face on the economic foundation group, just trying to fight with our land, to get a different zoning application that actually be a possibility. So I just wanted to share my comments on that. And I'm looking at some of those, with this own decision on what's best to handle this project. But I think we are very, very limited, limited projects. I guess this, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have two other people.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And y'all, I like my residents here in Adam. One thing that's come up here is we all know is our only industry associated now is, and it always has been, tourism. Scott's project is right on the town line at the end of the town of Plymouth, in the major highway. If you, whatever needs to be done to maybe resolve the issues at the end, could be worked out, the site plan, law, it's definitely going to be more relevant to the I. Some of us in the business, we can't hide all these type of things. And unfortunately, all these, it's going to be I's or the end of the town. Right at the historic zone, the big sign, welcome to Plymouth. This exit will make hours and so forth. So whatever needs to be handled, it could be worked out. And somehow repeating all the eyes, all the ridiculous project work, and lowering everything down, I think it's going to be beneficial to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else up there?
Hello, my current identity, I'm in the process. I am a company in here. And I work on the site plan to develop this facility. I don't know who's describing it, that we develop the unified complex plan, so that we can develop this park. We had a group same size as originally. When we started, if you haul for fifty thousand cubic yards of hotel, eventually we need to work out a plan. The balance of the site, the second site is the other part of the plan. To exit, we need some bill for the large portion, ten acres, to the five acre portion, the balance of the site. Now that required a million dollars for the team. But the chief of the board, the non-exempt, it's a same rep. I will say that the paywalls were fifty-five thousand, I think. So the site was significantly depressed. But it was balanced, the non-exempt meaningful. So as I said, I think the board should consider, and ask the board to announce the site. So, you know, we had that, you need the site, it's a game, it's a game. It doesn't mean five hundred cubic yards is the next, so maybe that's one hundred cubic yards, eight hundred dollars, it's a game. I definitely think we need to announce the site, the plan, because I think, you know, I put the project together, we had five acres, we had five acres, six, three, three hundred yard. And I know she just got it out to the end. Talked aside about the transfer, they asked the attorney to leave, to allow it and file it, it's been, we can allow it, but doesn't get any exposure. My understanding that the application filed it is no eligibility to exit. We didn't know that we need to have the transfer to the trees, including on the fitness portion, which is not a part of the my own. So there is an issue that land is not a part of the plans. So I just think the board needs to consider. The other thing, with the press, you may not have that. So this land, we're going to do a lot of the parking. Spend a lot of time making sure that part requires the required, I don't see how this can ever change that. So I think question. So again, hopefully the board takes time to consider this. Perhaps the extension against the I, like to see a profile through, how we are coming through, like the news from the three. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please?
Matthew Glenn. I'm here as a citizen of the town, as a business owner in town and a homeowner and a landowner in the industrial park, all put together. And as Mike said, I was kind of, I was involved with this in the beginning. I consider Mr. Sheen a friend. I've worked with him for many years. And we support a lot of the same charities together. So I got to know him pretty well. And believe it or not, I was involved in the purchase of the two properties that are in question. Using Mr. Sheen's money, we purchased it from a gentleman in Spain who wouldn't break them up into two pieces, which gave Jerry the ten-acre parcel over there. And I was involved with Rich Tabrizinski and Adam as we put together. We worked with Bill Shar and put it together and went in with the Unified Complex. And I worked with the town to get that. And we got approval for that. And then unfortunately, a lot of people in here know, my son was killed in a car crash, and I lost interest and basically walked away. So I introduced Scott and Mr. Sheen together as this, for this to come together. So I've been involved with it from the beginning and followed it closely. And I agree with what Mike said, is we had a unified complex. We were putting it together. We were going to put up this exact same-sized building on the larger lot and the forty thousand square foot one on the smaller lot. And eventually, I was talking to Jerry about me purchasing that forty thousand square foot building as an investment for us. And obviously, I lost interest in that as well. And then when Scott came with this new concept, what kind of made sense to me is, and I used to be a neighbor when my other building in Plymouth to where he is now. And he's right, there are orange cones just miles high in the place. There are signs all over the place. And I thought to myself, when you're driving into Plymouth, that's not what I want to see. So when he came up with the idea of lowering the grade and then keeping the look so when you came in, it was good, I thought it was a great idea. So I would just like to put my support behind that. And, you know, Bill House, he's right. I've worked on the Plymouth Economic Development Council. I've worked on the Chamber of Commerce. And what this town needs is more economic development. And if you're going to build something like this with solar, and we're going to be putting renewable energy, electric vehicle charging stations on there, it's going to become a showpiece for us. And if you're not going to lower it in the industrial park, where can we put it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
I'm Brian Kuhn, resident of Plymouth. My company is Associated Energy Developers. We do renewable energy systems across the country. Mr. Spencer asked me to lay out some of the solar systems on this property. And I thought I might just add a couple of benefits here that you may not see or be readily apparent. First of all, this type of system that's, that they're promoting is exactly the kind of system that the Massachusetts DOE R is asking for. It's making use of rooftop and parking space areas. It's not greenfield. That's exactly the kind of guidelines they have been issued. Second is that the new regulations require us to also install storage, electrical storage with the systems. And therefore, we have included into this design several megawatts worth of electrical storage, which helps the grid. And that grid capacity and grid resiliency is also needed nowadays. There is also an awful lot of, although it's not a direct replacement for trees, there's a lot of carbon. there's a lot of carbon sequestration and such that is done by the solar systems. Uh, you can look it up, but there's, uh, almost the equivalent of one acre of solar panels over the twenty year lifetime, provides amount of, uh, carbon sequestration of about seventy acres of trees. So there's a lot of good benefits here. I'm in favor of the project, and I just wanted to support it. Thank you.
Any last questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Back to the board?
If I may, just, if everyone else has done, I just want to clarify a couple of things that were said.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be brief. One thing, one comment that was made was that the trees were removed from the site, and they didn't need to be, and that is, uh, completely false, because if you look at the approved site plan, to build those retaining walls out to the property line, the whole lot would need to be clear cut so that the land could be worked, foundations could be put in for those walls, and the walls constructed, not to mention the earth that would need to be moved. You can't do that with trees still on the site. That's a fact. There's no way around it, especially the way that it was currently designed. Um, as for the removal of the soil, at no time did myself or Mr. Shay Spencer, uh, make a statement that no soil was removed for the site. We know the soil was removed from the site. It was removed because we needed working room to do some soil testing that we were trying to conduct. Just being open and honest about it, just didn't want it to go unsaid. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Tim?
So, Chairman, if I just could, one quick thing. So there were a number of things that were raised here about fines, about issues with the permit, who, and who was properly on a permit or not. And I would just point out that your role tonight is advisory to the building commissioner on the site plan only. And, and the second issue is whether or not you're comfortable with their authority removal, or if that requires additional permitting. Those are really the two things before you. Building Commissioner is fully aware of those other issues, those are all things that are dealt through his department. Again, just to bring it back to what you're doing tonight, it's the review of the site plan, and then second is the discussion about the gravel removal and whether you feel comfortable that's incidental to this project.
And if we don't feel comfortable?
Then your recommendation, I would say, is to recommend that a special permit be required through this zoning board of appeals, and then the applicant would have two options. One is to try to move forward with the site plan, um, at a higher elevation, uh, visible from the road, and do it, uh, that way, or come in and go through this board of appeals for that special permit. I would just say, from my perspective, that special permit, I'm not sure what safeguards or what conditions you might want to impose on this with that special permit. It might be nice to have the special permit, but I don't see, especially in an industrial park, any kind of additional safeguards that you would want to impose, uh, on that gravel removal in an area, again, that already has heavy truck traffic and, and movement. And certainly, if there are things that come to mind, and I know one was mentioned to me earlier, uh, there is certainly the ability to talk about certain things to add to this, but again, just by sending it to the zoning board of appeals for one more permit, I'm not sure that that accomplishes a heck of a lot more in this industrial park. I think if it was in any other area of town, certainly. But in, and again, as you've heard, I think I have the same feeling, area where you want to encourage development, uh, I think it's, it's a reasonable request, but again, that's the, the two issues before you tonight.
Thank you. Tim?
Okay. So that was a lot to, um, reel in and listen to for everybody speaking tonight.
We could go home and have a nap.
Uh, maybe you can, but I won't be able to. Um, a couple of quick comments before I ask a question or two. We need economic development in this town, without a doubt. This is the area that we should be putting in this type of business to accomplish that. There's not enough commercial land in the town now as it is. We, I'm repeating because this is the things that I wrote down, not just repeating the same thing in the board of selectmen chair said, a former board of selectmen chairman. This is the place that we need to allow this business to go in. Okay? So I think it's very important. It brings jobs, it brings taxes, and we take care of a land that's an eyesore already. This is in the industrial park. Anything we do in there is going to be an improvement, as far as I'm concerned. So I do have a couple of questions, though. I've gotta wrap my head around the permit being supposedly, um, received illegally, using false name, somebody else's company name, et cetera. Is that, that's not within our realm, but I certainly am not happy if that is the case.
And again, that's something the building commissioner has to deal with. Um, I mean, I don't have all the particulars myself, but that's, um, I think that's also in refer, in reference to the earlier permit, not the one before you now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So a couple of questions on these elevations and the requirement of almost five hundred thousand yards to be removed from the site. How high did we say the retaining wall was gonna be if you built per the previous plan from ground level up as far as the retaining wall? Couple more questions.
Mm-hmm.
So that, you're not answering one, and then we go back and forth. Did you research and look into possibly cutting the gravel removal in half, and seeing what that does to the site and retaining walls? Have you added complete buffers and everything in the, the plan that you submitted this evening? And I would like to see it be even more dense than what's on that plan as far as plantings and view sheds from Route Three.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could answer those two questions for me, I would appreciate it.
If I could, just to clarify the last one, are you just asking if we would be willing to add more plantings to that buffer?
Either way, whatever way that the building is built and approved, I would like to see the landscaping augmented.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that that's ever been an issue. I think we're willing to do whatever the community feels is in the best interest, for sure.
So what it, can, what's the height of the retaining?
The retaining walls in the permitted plan were eighteen feet at its highest point.
And when, when your proposal?
Uh, we've got a couple of walls, I'll have to ask, I defer to Rich.
The highest is twelve.
All right. The highest walls that we have on the current development are twelve, but they're in select areas that nod along the property lines themselves. One I know is in an area where we're trying to build a detention pond for water treatment, for water quality improvement.
Probably also, what would you say the reduction of wa, of wall is percentage-wise? From, the percentage of wall reduced, so you have fifteen foot walls, but I'd say, by eyeball, I would guess about eighty percent of those retaining walls are eliminated.
Yep.
I was gonna say seventy-five.
So seventy-five percent of the retaining walls would be eliminated completely?
Yeah. The idea was that we would slope all that and make it plantable.
And, um, have you given any thought into all those trips at four hundred and eighty, eighty-eight thousand yards, at twenty-eight yards at a time, and the traffic, and the effects of the roads?
We have.
We have. Have you thought about a reimbursement or some type of protection for the gravel that's being removed at all? Just thinking.
So what, what I would say, and it's something that was negotiated, this is a little different as an allowed use, if it is, but I think what he's referring to is often cases in a gravel removal operation, the number's usually ten cents a cubic yard that would be donated to the town to be used for improvements or maintenance of any of the roads in the vicinity of that, um, property. So.
I don't have any knowledge of that to be able to expand on that, but I can take that back.
I can certainly take a look into it and get back to the board at a later date. You want? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may have more, but that's all I have for now.
Okay. Forget it.
All right. I'm gonna try and put my notes into some sort of a coherent, uh, discussion, um, and I will be probably repeating, uh, what everyone has said, but I think it's well worth repeating. I do have a question for you, though, Lee. Uh, I wanna, uh, make sure to verify that there was a cease and desist, um, on this property until some of this was figured out. Is that correct?
So, again, these are better questions to the building commissioner. My understanding is that the permit was for site preparation and tree removal only. When it was identified that material is being, was being trucked off-site, a call was placed to the owner, and there was no written cease and desist, but a request to stop any removal of material off-site, which, again, my understanding is that occurred.
Okay.
So no written cease and desist.
Thank you for that clarification. I do want to say, uh, again, that, uh, I'm a proponent of industrial build in our industrial area. Uh, I am not a proponent of, um, housing in our industrial area because, um, then we have no room for industry. And from everything you've heard tonight, from Chairman Quintle to everyone else, uh, I do agree that this town, uh, does need smart growth, and industry is a part of that, it's even in our master plan. I have also said every time that, uh, uh, an applicant comes in front of us and wants to excuse their behavior because of they've built, uh, and then come for an excuse, in other words, post facto, oh, we built this in error, we're so sorry, we're coming back to you, but it's already built, what do you want us to do? You can't ask us to tear it down. That comes in front of us more often than we would like to see, and there's some, there seems to be some of that in this, that, um, uh, we have, uh, clearing going on, and we have, we have some of that in this. And that's always disturbing. So what happened with all of this? Again, I believe that it's important for those that are aggrieved around the permitting issues to resolve those issues. And that's not what's in front of this board tonight. And I'd really like to make sure that my comments and how I vote is consistent with what's in front of us tonight. I really want this town to take advantage of the federal infrastructure bill. It's out there, the mon, if we don't get the money, somebody else will. That's the way this grab goes. And you presented to us that this is how, um, you're going to, uh, build this property, is that correct? Could you clarify that a little bit for me?
Uh, we were just basically saying that we're, we really want to ramp up our operations. As I said, we've grown over the past twenty years from one to fifty people, and this bill will add in, I think it was twenty-four point five billion dollars on top of what is already going to be spent by the state level governments. Now, this increased demand will give us the ability to bid more aggressively on these contracts, we'll be able to bring in some of these contracts, uh, he's gonna go back to this manufacturing facility. But currently, right now, what we do is we'll install a lot of these larger signs, but we need to outsource all of this equipment to other manufacturing firms who are thirteen to fifteen to twenty-five hours away. So what we want to do is we want to bring that closer to here. We want to capitalize on some of that twenty-five billion dollars that is going to, um, New England in terms of, this is just allocations for road and bridges. So our effort at expanding our company is hopefully to capture some of that, and I think that will have a positive externality of, um, increasing jobs in Plymouth. I mean, in order for us to run those manufacturing facilities, we're gonna have to hire dozens of people, dozens of shift managers, dozens of people to, I mean, now you have South, you have Plymouth South High School where they have the tech program, and we would be happy to, to partner with that school and hopefully increase manufacturing jobs. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of where we want to go, that's how we want to expand. I think this is a great outlet for us to expand, but.
Again, uh, grabbing federal dollars that, uh, have been in the works for what seems like centuries, was probably only decades, uh, is, um, I, I think important for this community, whether you're doing it directly or indirectly, is pretty much what you're explaining to us. But I don't think that, um, I, I think there's a real concern in, in the middle of all of this, and that is, um, there shouldn't, that I, for one, on this board, don't want to see a precedent being set here that, um, uh, sand and gravel as a very valuable commodity in today's economy can be, um, basically bartered off of the land in Plymouth in order to move projects forward. And it kind of sits as the elephant in the room, uh, in this discussion. But then again, we're here to, uh, to take a look at a very somewhat narrow interpretation of what's happened with the permitting, uh, with the sand and gravel. So I, for one, would like to ask for a special permit for the removal of the sand and gravel to go to the zoning board of appeals. That puts another set of eyes on the discussion of sand and gravel and how it plays into this project, which I would like to see move forward. It's important to the community, and it will have positive impact on the community. But because it sits here, uh, within the discussion, and with how this permitting, which we're not here actually to review tonight, um, I, I, for one, would like to see it go to the zoning board of appeals. I know that, um, our interim manager, who's leaving us right now.
Conservation.
Uh, for the conservation commission, who will not be reviewing this, I believe. Um, thank you, Lee. So he and I somewhat disagree on, on that point. I'd also like to see, uh, that a bond is posted for this project, and that the bond actually be in reference to the solar panels, because we've seen, uh, others come before us and kind of make the promise of a solar panel kind of as a sweetener, but then they never go up. Uh, they're never part of the deal. And so if there's a bond, uh, that you have to post in order to show, uh, good faith that solar panels actually will be part of this project, uh, it's something that would be important to me also, uh, as a voting member of this board. Again, uh, a lot of what, um, my colleague on Zoom said, uh, probably has a lot of bearing and weight here, but it's, again, seems a little bit more like punishment after the fact, and we're not here to actually discuss that this evening. Uh, so on the two points that, uh, we're here to discuss, uh, I would like to see this, uh, go to the zoning board of appeals, uh, to, um, for a second set of eyes, particularly regarding, it's because it will be for the sand and gravel, so for a special permit. And I would also, uh, like to, um, see that, uh, we make a recommendation to the building commissioner, that a bond be placed on this project for the building of the solar panels. Otherwise, uh, it's the, um, the findings are already articulated. Is that correct, Robin? As far as the landscaping?
Yes.
And all of that?
And they've also actually submitted a more recent landscape plan that does include more buffering along the highway with some lower dense, um, shrubbery and things that will infill underneath the white pines as well already.
Which, which I appreciate, because in essence, it's the whole point of why the sand and gravel is being removed. So, uh, with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll add a couple of comments to that before I bring it back to Frank. I agree with both of my fellow board members. There's one issue that I have that seems to be left out in most other issues, especially when economic development is mess, is mentioned, which annoys me substantially, because we have an enormous groundwater resource in this community, and the more sand we dig out, the quicker that gets polluted and useless. And the value of that water is cheap now. Look at what it costs out west. It's enormously valuable, and we have to be very careful about how we deal with it. If we're not, economic development is out the drain fifty years from now. So, I would consider looking at details at this excavation and making sure you're getting closer to the groundwater table. How are you gonna protect that? You're losing sand, what does sand do? Sand binds to the water, it holds the water, it protects it from being polluted to some extent, and it filters it. The more you take out, the less that happens. So somehow or another, you have to convince me that whatever you're gonna do, you're gonna protect the drainage water that comes off of those structures and goes into the ground. The other thing... The other thing that I would like to mention is the fact that I think a huge amount of our income, everybody's always talking about lack of income because we don't have enough industrial growth. We put in industrial growth there, and we tear down all the sand and all the buffer to the highway, and we've lost a good percentage of our income from visitors because they don't want to drive through a place like that. You've made an effort to fix it, that's fine. I would suggest that you add another implement to it, and that is take some of this sand and gravel that you want to remove and put a berm on top of the hill and heighten it by six feet, and then plant the berm. To do that, you'll probably have to get permission from the state to intrude on their highway land, but it'll make a much better project. I think that's about all I have to add to that, and I'll bring it back to Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that I think we can walk and intrude at the same time. I think the characterization that opposing a waste of water, putting strip mining potential to the site and remove all the trees and shrubs is anti-business. It's not, in fact, it's long-term business. We don't protect these things as the chairman is saying. We don't protect our air and our water, our natural resources, our heritage, and then we don't do that diligently. We're ruining, not going to have a business, you know, we don't want to be either in the long term. And it's actually not long-term, it's more, it's all of these natural resources become far more critical, and then we may need to protect them. This area, it's a very interesting area, this specific lots outside of the architecture district, but just barely. This area is rich in these places, and that site, again, was not a treeless area, it was not an area, someone said anything would be the improvement. Well, based on what we have now, that's close to trueism. But beforehand, it was a beautiful piece of property with great pottery, thickly wood, and a wonderful offer for maybe going to pass the community of three, and then not wanting to see it isolated. The trees were there to protect that. One of the questions I have, I think the answer should be answered, Kevin made, why would you, if you're so concerned with the heritage and quality of the community and not letting people see that asset anymore, why did you remove all of those trees and shrubs to begin with? I think the answer seems clear, I would need to convince him that it's not, that you were after something else first, and that is the sand and gravel. And at first, it was 125,000 cubic yards, and then work, and now it's a million cubic yards. So I do think we can find compromise, I do think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, that we can protect our natural resources and still encourage businesses. As a matter of fact, when we protect our natural resources, the better quality of this property attracts, that's the reputation we need. So let's try to do that, but let's not rush into it. I don't want to be pressured into coming up with, let's move this forward right now because we need this so bad. We can do this in the short term, and we probably would be closer to it if the regulations hadn't been followed, if the regulation had been followed to this point, and then we didn't have this massive exclamation happen. But I think you should take a month or so and find a way to do both, to walk and chew gum, to protect the natural resources, maybe lose some of the explanations, maybe reduce the size of that building, go from 10,000 to 137,000 is a wonderful testimony to the success of this business, and it is an impressive success record, but it's also, we don't have to go that fast, there's plenty of space there, that's why it's something that's more reasonable, the use of that land, and accomplish the work we want to accomplish. I think we can do that. And that's my invitation to have discussions continue, to continue this, not to rush forward and give this into hands of the CBA or anyone else. Yeah, let's find a way to condition this proposal in a way that pleases everyone, and I am not so devoted to this business at all. I'm devoted to this, and I'm right, I am devoted to this in a wrong way or at any cost. We can't afford those costs anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the non-voting member of this board, what I say may have some value to people or not. But I start by saying that I'm a bit distressed by hearing from so many people regarding this project relating to matters that this board doesn't address. I've heard words like fraud used, I've heard the phrase strip mining used, I've heard other extremes used, none of which have actually been established by any of the authorities that actually do address these issues. So I become concerned when this board makes decisions based upon not facts but rhetoric. So my first request to this board as the non-voting member is to consider your decisions based on the facts, based on what's before us, not the speculation, not the extremes, not the assertions that haven't been proven. There are two issues before this board, essentially. There is an existing plan upon which I believe, unless I am corrected, the owner of the property, and it has now been established that the petitioner is the owner of the property, notwithstanding what others have said in the past about transfers, non-transfers, names, et cetera. The owner of the property can build what's been approved, or they can be given an opportunity to build something else, in this instance, what they have proposed or a variant thereof. They have provided a rationale for doing what they're doing. We may accept it, we may not, but they provided a rationale. The rationale being an aesthetic having to do with lowering the building site, preventing some of the visual impacts, and that's something worth considering. One of the board members here has suggested that maybe it's worth looking at not quite being as extreme, certainly a valid concern. But I'd like to echo what everyone else has said, which is, this is the industrial park. This is where this is supposed to take place. A reference was made to our town master plan. One of the things that was noted in our town master plan of 2004, printed in 2006, is that this town lacks sufficient building sites of significant size to encourage business. We don't have them. This is one of them. Somebody's proposing to build on it. Let's dial it all back and come up with an appropriate answer. As Mr. Mann said, let's let this board, not other boards, not other committees, let this board work with this petitioner and see if we can come up with an appropriate way to build what is best for the town visually, economically, environmentally. All of those things need to be factored in, that's what we're here to do. I hope that's what we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any final questions?
So.
Comments or concerns?
Yes, that was well said, thank you. Very well said.
So I have a question for the petitioner, anyone who is a petitioner. Probably not you. Not you as the attorney. Can you address any of the questions that the board has asked you tonight? One being, is there a possibility for a more balanced site? Is there a possibility for a berm? Can we work those conditions, can we impose those conditions this evening? Or is it something that you would feel more comfortable bringing back and discussing further? I'm just, go ahead.
Can I just, I don't mean to interrupt. I don't think you're going to be able to answer my question by showing me an elevation of what's going on or showing us a berm on the highway for us to be comfortable to vote on something this evening. So I'd like to see this thing be continued versus voting to send this to a zoning board of appeals or anything along those lines. I'd like to work with you guys and with the board and with the public to create something that's going to benefit not only the developer, but the town of Plymouth and everybody as all. So I really don't think you can be able to answer my questions tonight to my satisfaction.
So to continue, Mr. Grandy?
I'd like to see you come back. You've heard the comments made by not only every member of the planning board as far as 500,000 cubic yards of gravel being removed.
Thank you, Mr.?
Amongst other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy, I just want to finish my statement.
I'm sorry.
So I think, listening to my fellow board members, I will pull back on the special permitting because I understand better their feeling, but I wanted to hear from you whether or not you could address any of those, our questions this evening before we go back to a vote.
Well, thank you. I don't think the questions regarding the site elevations and those details can be addressed. Those engineering questions, I don't think they're prepared to address those tonight. But there were two points that were brought up tonight by the board that I think we can address right now. One was whether we would consider a bond, and my client has advised me he certainly would. And secondly, was whether it'd be a consideration as to payment of some percentage of the value received for, you know, the gravel removal, and again, that would be another consideration he would certainly undertake to consider. This is not, you know, we talk about incidental, and this is clearly incidental to this particular project, and I don't want to get all legal mumbo jumbo as Mr. Chairman had seconded in the meeting, but Black's Law Dictionary does have a description and a definition for incidental, and this is more incidental than it is not incidental, in my view. But in any event, I believe that our engineering and architectural team could probably come back with answers to address those other issues. But as to those first two that came up, as I suggested, Mr. Spencer is clearly on board with both the bond and with, you know, potentially considering the payment for whatever the cost is. This was not, the removal was not, you know, you've got a site here, and if you had like some uplands, you know, quarter of a mile away that was removing gravel, clearly not incidental. This is necessary and essential to this project, so if, you know, if it comes down to, you know, an issue with that, we certainly would consider it. I don't want to belabor this hearing any longer and prolong it, but yes, we would be amenable to a short continuance of this hearing and come back with the ability to address those specific questions that the board has.
Thank you, thank you for your answer.
What's our next available date?
Our next meeting is January 11th, and then I believe it's the 25th after that, so the 11th is our next meeting.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue until January 11?
I'd like to make a motion to continue until January 11th to address the issues brought before this board based on our discussions this evening, particularly whether or not we could have a more balanced site, while the bond issue seems to be answered, whether or not 10 cents per cubic yard can be given to the town for its other projects and a berm be built. Did I miss any of the points?
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
And.
Make sure whatever goes into the ground is clean, is what it came out.
I think those are on the findings, correct?
Time on January 11th, we need a time, so it's a conformal review.
Right.
Okay.
We have one public hear-
We have one public hearing that is scheduled for 7:05, and then we have another site plan review scheduled, so it would be sometime after that.
Our second motion. Here's a second. Any further discussion? Oh, in favor, Tim?
Yes.
We're gonna?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Malcolm? Yes.
So January 11th?
We are so popular tonight, next time, next meeting, we'll have a change machine at the door, so when you come in, you can, it's like going to the movies.